Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Any public input? Seeing none. I'd like to hear motion to approve the minutes of January 4th.
So moved.
Do you hear second?
Second.
Any errors, omissions, changes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Approval of minutes for January 11th work session. Do you hear motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I had something.
Okay.
And I would appreciate if you could look at it. So Section 2A. We're talking about how we changed the budget during this work session. And it says, "In doing so, it was decided to remove the following repairs from warrant articles." And I'd like to change the words warrant articles to from the budget. And fund from, um, fund them from other sources, that's fine. So, because we didn't take them off of warrant articles, we took them out of the budget.
Right. Good catch. So, motion to amend is written.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, January 12th minutes for the budget hearing. Do you hear motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the budget hearing on January 12th.
Okay, do hear second?
Second.
Any further corrections or omissions?
I did have something. Page two, but I'm not getting a page number on these, so I'm gonna have to scan. It's a typo in here, it says aid, A-I-D-E, and it should say aid.
Right.
Okay, so that, because it's referred to as aid. So it's the second bullet under the part where Articles 6 and 7 are being discussed, second bullet from the bottom. So just to correct that. And then, these minutes didn't actually reflect what Articles 6 and 7 were, the warrant articles about our, our capital reserve fund.
Right.
Do we want to have that in the minutes? Or does, I don't know what happens with the, how many people read these, or what your...
There probably should be a record of it. Maybe we should say, building board is proposing to use some of the capital reserve Article 6 and 7, is that what it was?
Well, Article 6 and 7 is Article 6, I would just like to amend the minutes to reflect that Article 6 is $50,000 for the school facilities maintenance capital reserve fund. And that's to be funded from the unassigned fund balance from July 1, 2016. And Article 7 is the replacement of equipment capital reserve fund, which is $30,000, to be funded from the unassigned fund balance of July 1, 2016. So if we could just put those in, that in the minutes.
Okay.
Will you have that sent June 30?
What's, oh, June 30, it should say June 30.
Did I set a wrong date? Okay.
Effective July 1st.
Yes, June 30, thank you, Tom. Yes, that's wrong what I said, yeah.
Leslie will get with you later. All right, so motion to approve the amended minutes. So moved. Do you hear second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Manifesto being circulated, Tom, can we have the treasurer's report, please?
Yes, it was distributed to you previously. Highlights started the month with $1,359,970. Had receipts of $1,563. Net disbursements of $1,812. Your ending balance was $1,111,028.70. Few little differences this month than what you have seen. The amounts appearing as receipts from the town is higher than you have been seeing before the calendar fell. There were three payments in December, rather than two, just because of the calendar. We did get $10,000 from E-Rate reimbursements. And $19,554 from Primex as reimbursement for the loss at Lakeway last winter with the heating units.
Treasurer's report?
Also have a financial summary. The superintendent and I are committing to spend a significant amount of time over the next couple of weeks now that we have some budget activities behind us. And we're going to spend a lot of time looking at the anticipated expenditures that are not yet recorded. It's kind of a bit of a swing at this point, and we're going to see if we can get closer and get a firmer number for you for the balance of the year now as we move ahead. Try to identify those pieces. There are some things that are occurring now during January that will eliminate estimates and get to more concrete numbers, so that's, that'll be our commitment for the next edition.
Tom, I had one question. The column that is called adjusted budget.
Yes.
I see it's changing, some figures are changing in that column.
Yes.
And so, can you help me understand how that happens?
You had one major adjustment a couple of months back where we took some of the money from fuel accounts.
Okay.
And you authorized the move up to the insurance accounts to cover those over expenditures.
Yeah.
We have smaller items that occur more or less frequently. Within a supply line being moved to, a library line, or vice versa, depending on the needs of the department.
Okay, so those are adjustments that either the board is making, or they're below the $7,000 mark and you're making, okay.
The principals or director approved those.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that, and I'm sorry if I've asked that before. And then on the last page, which is talking about revenues? I noticed that some of the anticipated revenues have been updated. And do you, I mean, if I do the math, I can see what the variance would be. Do you, I mean, how come we don't have that variance column filled out, or are these numbers all pretty in flux?
They are definitely in flux.
Okay.
Even to the point of adequacy aid.
Yeah.
Where we're not going to have a solid number on that until April.
Okay.
So it's updated to what Department of Education told Department of Revenue in the fall at rate setting. But beyond that, the other amounts are some of those that we'll be looking at further as we progress.
When you get into it more, yeah.
To get further, better estimates.
So the original number of $3,677 could change to be lower than we're just saying?
The $3,677 is what was in the budget. It was revised to $3,541 at rate setting.
Okay.
Now I'm anticipating that that is the amount we're going to get in the third column.
Anticipation.
But I really won't know until the final payment in April.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I do have a couple of copies of the large expenditure report, which is to have. On the table tonight, we have the budget forms, default budget forms and warrants, all for your signatures. We'll be posting them by the end of the week. If you are unable to or not inclined to sign them tonight, then you can come in any time during the week and fill them out. I guess since you're all here.
Yeah, I thought we could do that in between the meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Next item on the, is the calendar for 2016 and '17.
Okay, there's a slight change in the calendar that you, have more if anybody wants one, but you had been given a copy of a draft of the calendar, and the admin team had met to discuss the calendar, and we wanted to make a couple of changes. So the changes to the new calendar would be on yours that you received a couple of weeks ago, the 23rd of November was a half a day. That is now a full day of no school. And January 23rd, I mean, sorry, January 30th was a staff development day. It is now a school day. And a staff development day has been moved to the end of the school year on the 16th. Everything else remains the same. SAU 35 has had their calendar out for a couple of weeks now, and this is very much in line with theirs. And we haven't seen anything from 36 or up north, but they were assuming the follow, so this is fairly consistent, I think, where they're heading as well.
I just have a question for the board. I was wondering if you wanted them to go back and put the board meeting session dates on here, like we did last year, in a different color?
The board meetings?
The dates, the first and third Monday of the month, unless it's a holiday, then we usually meet right after the holiday.
We could certainly do that.
Okay. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay, consensus has it.
Okay. Should make a motion.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve the 2016-'17 schools' calendar as presented, with the addition of the board meeting dates added to it.
Okay. Did you second it, Millie?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions about the calendar? Hear none? Accept your approval? Say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have ExxonMobil Educational Grant.
Yeah, the next item is, there's such a thing as a ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Grant, and Mrs. Melanson had received a letter from them. And I think it's important for everyone to realize that one of our local mobile stations, Simon's Market, nominated Littleton High School. And this letter is announcing that we did receive a grant of $500 to be used in the area of math or science. So I'd like to thank Simon's Market for nominating Littleton High School.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
That's great. Thank you very much, Simon's Market.
Would you accept the grant and appropriate those funds?
Oh.
You just have to...
Make a motion to accept the grant and appropriate the funds for $500.
I make a motion to accept this grant from ExxonMobil and to appropriate the funds of $500.
Do you hear second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we have any idea what we'll use the funds for?
Not yet, but when I was meeting with the superintendent today, he was gonna follow up with Mrs. Melanson and assess some guidelines on what that should be used for. Something that isn't necessarily in the budget now, something that obviously would promote math or science with our students.
Yeah.
Can I suggest that when you do decide that, let us know and we'll announce it at a board meeting?
No, definitely.
And Simon's, too. It'd be great to keep them in the loop.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Lakeway principal search.
Well, again, I met with superintendent briefly, he wanted me to hand this update out to you, which states that I think most of it is already in place, that he recommended an internal search for this time, so there has been an internal posting as of last Friday, I believe. And he's recommending establishing a committee. And on page two, he's listed who he recommends should be part of that committee. Obviously, no names, but positions at this time.
And my understanding was that he revised the questions, or?
Yes, I was unaware of the questions in the past, so I can't really bring you up to date on what exactly he changed, but he did also submit a survey on principal qualities.
Okay, he added some stuff to it.
He also suggested using the services of Dr. Bryant, and hopefully, his goal would be, the timeline would be an appointment to be made by March, so it's fairly aggressive
Would have any further questions about this document or concerns?
You know, when you look at the superintendent recommended for a screening committee, it obviously represents Lakeway well in terms of staffing and parent involvement.
So would the superintendent be appointing these people to the committee?
That's my understanding, yes.
What was the answer?
My understanding is yes.
I can't address all your voices that way.
I think perhaps he would be bringing committee names to the board. Well, I'm busy, but there is a quick timeline.
Yes, it is, rest of the timeline.
Okay, the one thing I wanted to bring up was having a board work session regarding the deliberative session next week. So my thoughts are that everybody will be involved in discussions, and I wrote out something, but they're not absolutely correct yet, so you can take them home and mull over them, and we'll... What day is a good day for everybody to have a work session, by the way?
Did we talk about this before?
The date, I mean.
The date.
Well, we talked about, you, I guess, weren't going to be here the 25th. Monday.
Did you know what day of the week that is?
It's a Monday.
Monday.
Right. We talked about doing it then?
Tuesday, the 26th.
Okay.
Tuesday would be great for me, thank you.
Right. Millie?
I guess, but...
Tuesday, the 26th, work session?
Yep.
What time?
Greg, can you get away at 4:30? Are you gonna be here, or?
I have the hospital's annual meetings that night.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I need to be at that.
Okay.
So, it's five to seven.
Is another day better?
I've eliminated one job, so I'm a lot freer than I used to be.
Monday or Wednesday would work fine, for me, as far as I know. Looks like it'd be okay.
I don't know about Wednesday afternoon, I think I have an obligation, but I'm, it's only day canceled, so.
We're trying to have people with the February...
Before the delivery of reimbursement, if we gotta do it earlier.
We have the 28th available.
The reason I can't do my...
That gives us, that gives us one, what, two business days after we do it in the afternoon.
Two, from New York.
We could do Monday.
But now I'm hearing there's gonna be big snows. Could we do an early morning view, so I may not go?
Six?
I don't know if you should not just, you know, do it without them, though.
So you're coming home on the 26th?
I'm coming home on the Tuesday.
Okay.
If I go at all.
Okay.
So if I don't go, I'm available Monday. But...
Okay, well...
Tuesday's good for you.
Yeah.
Yep, Tuesday's good for me. I can do Monday, too, Wednesdays.
I can do, I can do Monday or Tuesday.
I can do Monday.
You can do Monday.
Monday?
Can you do Monday?
Yeah.
Let's tentatively book it for Monday, then.
The 25th.
The 25th at, can you make 4:30, Greg?
Yeah.
Well, because Barbara was the person who spoke at the hearing about the contract.
Right.
So that's a pretty integral part of our presentation, if we're gonna continue with that line, you know?
Yep. Do you want me to prepare something that I would recommend, and then you can go over it on Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.
At 4:30, is that what I heard?
I just, like, you know, so I gotta put that together.
I know.
Did you say 4:30 would be okay?
I can make that.
4:30 Monday.
4:30.
In the SAU conference room.
And where we need to see.
The SAU.
I have some stuff for her.
That what she said?
Okay.
Superintendent's search request.
Okay, Barbara, can you update on something?
Yes, well, we met, we had a nice long meeting, and we've got another meeting scheduled. So we're, I mean, it's coming along, coming along well, and we're still on time. Applications are still coming in, so we're, you know, reviewing them as they come in at this point. So we're on this time schedule, and there's not too much more to say about it.
All right. So the only other thing I was a little remiss about, but I'd like to congratulate Danny Brammer for being student of the year.
Ah, yes.
It's great.
Congratulations to Danny.
Principal reports, Kelly, I think you're on.
So this month, we now have 125 identified students, we added one since I wrote the report. And I thought I would talk about something that falls into my umbrella that you probably don't hear much about, the homeless youth. Typically, when we think of the homeless youth, we think of kids either living on the street, or in cars, or motels. And yes, that does qualify them as homeless, but in Littleton, we have several students and families that qualify as homeless under what's called doubling up. So they're living either with friends or family in a temporary housing situation. And I gave you some numbers. For Lakeway students, we currently have 33 students that are in a doubling up situation. And at the high school, could be siblings to some of the Lakeway students, but we have nine that are count, well, I should say Daisy Bronson and Littleton High School, there are nine. But there is guidelines under the McKinney-Vento Act that protect those that are homeless. And I did, because I'm sure you wouldn't want to go and read through the whole entire document, I did give you a brochure that really highlights what the school's responsibility is for students that are homeless. And, you know, when I'm made aware that we have a family that qualifies as homeless, I contact the family. I give them information on the local shelters, or the homeless liaison in the community, and food pantries, things like that. Students that are homeless can be entitled to transportation if it's required to get them to school on a consistent basis. And they are eligible to either go to school in their town of origin, so if they were homeless, say in Whitefield, and they ended up, or if they lived in Whitefield and ended up doubling up with a family in Littleton, they could be entitled to go to school in Whitefield, and we would have to coshere that transportation with Whitefield to get them there. So it really, each case is unique, and we really have to look at the circumstances around the homeless situation, but, you know, we are able to set aside, I think, $1,000 out of Title I to help with transportation costs of homeless youth, so.
Is this a number that you track annually, Kelly?
We do, we don't have to formally track that, we do keep, I guess, tabs on it, if you will. I don't know, Patty, do you have to fill out anything in one of your state reports for the homeless youth at the end of the year?
It's in power schools.
Yeah.
How they're involved, and that's how we vote.
So I'm, and it's always to the best of our knowledge.
Sure.
Because sometimes we're not made aware of the families doubling up, you know, that's, but...
And do you find, how do you find that out when it's occurring?
Usually, teachers will notify us, or the school counselors. Sometimes I have parents contact me directly. But usually, it's through the classroom teachers. I don't know if you have any other questions.
Is 33, well, I guess it was 33 and 9, are those typical numbers, or is that?
Well, I think that, you know, for doubling up, that seems a little high for our area. You know, usually, there is a homeless situation each year where the student may be unaccompanied and homeless, you know, so he's in, he or she is an unaccompanied youth, living without their parents and are homeless. Obviously, if they're 18, they can do that. If they're under the age of 18, I would have to notify DCYF of that situation, you know, but I would, 33 is a high number. And it's hard to differentiate, are they, just, I mean, maybe it's a family that just, for generations, have lived together, and that's what they do, or are they doubling up because their housing situation is in crisis?
Are there any other services that you have identified that aren't being covered by other social service agencies that?
Well, we also provide, if they're not already eligible, we provide free lunch for the students and breakfast, so they can eat here. And transportation, that's the school's responsibility.
Right.
If, but I do try to link them up with the... But I do try to link them up with the community outreach. They have a homeless outreach person here in Littleton, and, you know, sometimes shelters are needed. And Lancaster has one, and there's one in Plymouth, and then there's the Domestic Violent Shelter in Bethlehem, so.
So would that, would that student's counselor know, or be able to identify any other needs that may not be covered one way or the other, either with other social service agencies or through the school?
Well, if the school counselors made aware of some of that stuff, you know, we would certainly make them, hook them up with the community agency that could best support their need, you know. We do our best to make sure all of their needs are met.
Right, right, okay.
I mean, I don't know if I answered your question, but, I mean, it's, it's a case by case situation, so.
Our, our, our policy that I know is being implemented of every student having a connection with an adult in the district. And so whether that's a counselor or another person, would that person be aware of the situation and able to sort of keep an eye on?
Well, there is the fine line of confidentiality, but certainly, if it's a classroom teacher, most classroom teachers would know if their student was homeless or in that situation. So they, at the very least, the guidance counselor would be notified, and so they could monitor that administration at the different buildings would be notified, so they could help support if need be. But, you know, we certainly wouldn't broadcast it to the entire teacher population. No, I'm just saying, you know, because it is a sensitive subject.
Right.
So, you know, at the high school, for example, when students have four or five different teachers throughout the day, it may be one teacher that is aware, or the guidance counselor, and not all of the teachers.
Thank you. Joanne?
So our enrollment's gone up by one. We have 338 students now, since we last gave our enrollment. On the school goals, we, during the administrative advisory meeting, we have talked a little bit last time about looking at possibly changing the schedule, or looking at some different options that would give our students, well, either a more coherent schedule that the middle school and the high school would all be on the same passing times and all that. And so I want to discuss a little bit about how that process went. It was certainly discussed in a subcommittee about what the schedule would look like with the, with the middle school actually meeting every other day in classes for, I believe, 60 minutes, and then the high school with same, with the block scheduling. From then, in that, we met probably, I would say, three or four times as a subgroup. We then brought it to the Leadership Advisory Committee, the Administrative Advisory Committee, which we all talked about that. It seemed like many people that sat at the committee had many, many questions, and were a little bit uneasy about how the schedule would look. It seemed that it really needed a little bit more discussion with the vertical team leaders. So the vertical team leaders brought that back to the vertical team, and then they were asked to bring that information back to me, which they did. And when we, we brought it back, it really was decided that we really didn't have enough time to really, with Mrs. Joe Bear out on maternity leave and some other things going on, that we really needed a little bit more time to look at the schedule to see how that was really gonna impact our students. So the, what the teachers had come up with from the vertical team discussion is that the, the schedule would remain the same with some tweaks that would go on with the schedule to best meet the needs as best we could with the students. But in this way, everybody had a voice in that discussion, so it didn't just come from a subcommittee, and it didn't just come from the Administrative Advisory Committee. I think that's important, because I think this is a very important decision to make, changing the schedule around, and we really need to kind of look at what we're offering, what classes we want to change, what's gonna happen. I think we need a little bit more discussion about that, so that's where we are. So we're staying the same with some improvements, the newer improved schedule, I guess, with the more. So that's, that was a major, took up quite a bit of time. The professional development coordination between Lakeway and Daisy Bronson Brooklyn High School, we're working on in January, the PD Day will be in the NAWA, Skills Navigator. I think that that will be very helpful between our schools to look at that information. And also, in March, what we'll be doing is, in the, in the AM, we'll be looking at plans being made for the core values, more, more, moving towards the finalizing of what the core values are gonna look like, the mission statement, the vision statement, much what Vanessa and Emily had presented with you with the students before. And in the PM, some of our teachers will be working with Mr. CTC teachers in the competency assessment development, so that we can actually move towards that and begin looking, trying to mesh the, what the CTC teachers are doing with what we should be doing, probably working towards that goal for the high school and middle school for competency assessments. Also, in, we're also working towards the, on the March day to the topic of having Landmark College coming, and and the workshop will be understanding and responding to the executive function ADHD in the classroom, because as we are encountering students with some special needs, and we need, we need some tools, we need to have that discussion so that we can better meet the needs of those students. So that is the discussion amongst the PB. Again, the activities are still going on with the advisory times to prepare students for the career and academic options. And Student of the Year again, at the Littleton Chamber of Commerce, Danny Brammer, that was, that was presented on January 15th. Very nice time, and we were excited for Danny. Dessert with the principals held on January 14th. I had exactly four parents in the audience, but everybody received a letter. Everybody's senior parent was aware of the new attendance policy, and today was the first day of it, so. Do what we can do and put information out there, and hope people, they ask, want to ask questions, they can come and be fed, but, you know.
Well, as you enforce it, I'm sure you'll get more questions, right?
Right, right.
That'll be how the process works.
When I talked a little bit with Vanessa about the curriculum fair, she, she talked to you a little bit about that last time, about student-led in March, with the students running, about how, what they do, and what they've learned and all that. We've decided to rename that as the Student Showcase, because that seems to be a little bit better, so that's what we refer to. Just before I forget, the improvement classroom and the school climate, I am going to begin meeting with some students that I will be working with, the guidance department, some other teachers, to come up with a group of students that I can meet with and have lunch with, and start, have a little bit conversation about their concerns about school. I'm sure it will have something to do with the attendance policy, possibly seniors leaving early, that sort of thing, but the discussion at least is open, so that they can come talk to me about what they want to talk to me about. The SAT workshops for juniors are taking place during advisory to help support the SAT preparation. They are taking place, the January 12th and 19th, by the guidance department. It is a strategic approach for preparation for SATs. We are working with Khan Academy in the SAT for partnership, for individualized practice-based scores, for, also accommodates differentiated instruction. So let me think, that would be better, prepare, prepare our students. Did have middle school classroom spelling bee today. It was kind of, it took a little bit of a time, because they had to go through quite a few rounds, but the winner was Landon Bromley, and he'll be traveling to Concord next month to represent us on the state level. So, congratulations on Landon. Just a couple of things that's been going on. You can see the middle school's been kind of busy, especially the science department. They've got the Eastern Brook trout eggs that they're watching what's going on, so they can get ready to release those. And Mrs. Torres wanted me to share with you about her weighted balls that she has with the kids. They sit on, and they, you know, they can relax themselves and move around. It's, it's kind of a neat thing to watch during class. You would think it'd be a little bit chaotic, but it's not. It seems to be, works out pretty well for them. They've been also doing a major unit on heredity, and have actually drawn up some things about what, what, what somebody would look like if they put in certain features, and so that's been great to watch. With the wellness is off to a good start for Daisy Bronson. They have science teachers meeting yesterday to discuss NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards, and how to implement those. So that involves sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science teachers. And meeting again, trying to set up a date for our technology committee that extends the discussion from Lakeway to Daisy Bronson and Littleton High School. And lastly, just so I don't forget this, because as I was doing my notes and sending them in, Abigail Wall has been nominated for the Fran J. Probus Mathematics Teaching Award for Young Math Teachers, and a couple of the characteristics are commitment to good mathematics, confidence that all children can learn, a spirit of self-reflection and professional curiosity, caring and concern for colleagues, a willingness to explore, to learn, and to grow as a teacher of mathematics, and a willingness to share mathematical and pedagogical activities for others. And we'll find that out at their math spring conference, if we have a state winner.
Nice one. Congratulations to her.
Anything happening? Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, the current technical report, most of our programs, as you know, are year-long, so we, last week, we reached the midpoint of our, of our courses. A lot is, a lot, very active today in guidance, as most courses in the high school, students switch to their second semester courses, but we continued, so we were business as usual for the, for the month. Enrollment really doesn't change in, in those programs, but I really, really want to just highlight one area which I found was really exciting, because and I think it fits nicely into your mission as a board, K-12 initiative. And we've always had a program, a project lead the way here at the high school, and even at the middle school, around engineering. You've heard a lot recently about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, and STEAM, which adds arts or creativity. So Project Lead the Way certainly fits that, fits that mold, and they've really expanded. They have programs now K through 12, and had a discussion with Lakeway admin, and then they got involved, they got some teachers involved. But anyways, a week, last Thursday, about six of us went to Concord to attend a presentation or workshop on, in different areas, because they've also branched out to high school. But to look at programs, K through five is called Launch. Six, seven, and eight is gateway programs, and then, then the high school programs around engineering, computer science, and they have a new program biomedical. So we broke up into sessions and investigated the three teachers from Lakeway, then middle school teachers, and also had somebody from our science department. And a question I think people had in their minds, is how does this fit with the new science standards? Fits very nicely. Doesn't replace, you still need to do work around the science standards, but it, but it fits nicely. So people were pretty excited about the presentation, and in fact, I have a meeting with Tracy Howard tomorrow to look at next steps. And we have, well, she doesn't live in Woodsville any longer, but she grew up in Woodsville. Mary Laternal is really in charge of programs in, in high schools, and she'll be, she's certainly more than willing to come up and meet with us and look at what we need to do, and maybe put some programs in place. So we're really looking at this. There's a lot to do before, you know, we're gonna make a statement that we're gonna be jumping into this next year, but we really want to look at what's involved, the training involved, the cost, and the benefits. As far as Lakeway, I don't know what kind of feedback any administrators had, but teachers are pretty excited, because it's a new program to them, and I'll be coming back in a month or so with an update.
Right, great initiative.
And as I said before, it's business as usual in classrooms, and we too look forward to our next, next Friday with Southern Regional Educational Board to really look at our assessment practices. And that's actually for two days, January and March, two sessions, so we really want to get some good work out of that.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
Again, first part of my report, power school statistics, just showing the activity, you know, in that 30-day window, and then throughout the year, so just some numbers there to show that it is being used. Attended NCS Friday, the topic of conversation there was some grant management with a grant that's coming up. When it was introduced to us in July, it was interpreted as a, well, as a RUS grant, mainly focusing on video conferencing equipment, long-distance learning. It seems that the terms have changed, and they're implementing STEM resources with it as well, so we're trying to find out if we can still get in on the grant. Mr. Smith had an email today, kind of with a bounce around, that there are some agencies still trying to get us involved, at least on the CTC level, but I'm waiting for response back from NCS, whether, you know, we're going in with a different group or with them, so. And it's a matching grant as well, so I'm not sure what the ratio is, but it's, it's a decent-sized grant right now that's being proposed. I want to say the bottom line, that they showed us Friday, it was almost 900,000 in equipment, so, and a lot of that going towards the North Country Schools, Berlin all the way down to Lincoln, so more to come on that. Safety security, we finally had our baseline test with CopSync last week. We did a separate test at the high school, and then a separate test for Lakeway. So we've kind of seen a lot of the what-ifs now. I was hoping to have some reports for you for today. Those get generated by the, the company, and then they get sent to us. I think at the PD level, they get them as an automatic notification, but I requested them just to see what our numbers were for the baseline, so. So I'm hoping that next meeting, I'll be able to give you a breakdown of that, between how many devices responded. A lot of the issues we had, some of the staff weren't comfortable. They didn't know how many steps they could go until they would hit, hit a trigger point of actually sending an alert, so, so a lot of those issues are resolved, but then we also had staff that were ready to, to make the product better. We had, like, instant feedback as soon as people saw how it worked, so Mr. Smith's got a list of items on his, his list for the next safety meeting to kind of get things taken care of, so. But for the most part, we didn't have too many problems with it, so I will just keep banging away on it. But I will get you some reports and some, some blogs of what you see. I mean, for police, emergency standpoint, it was like, it's almost instant for communication. I mean, when you do a test, everyone still responds, so when we did our test up here, within 30 seconds, you had a response from state police saying, yep, received, we got it, you know.
I will say it's a very different mindset. When you're used to going into a lockdown, you feel very isolated. You're alone in your room, lights are off. This gives you really great feedback of who's involved, who's on, who's on their way. This gives you really great feedback of who's involved, who's on, who's on their way, who's been notified. It's really reassuring. And then when people log in and respond, and this is just a test, it's live, it's active. I think it would prove to be very helpful.
Great, great. Thanks, yeah. Was that the whole staff or how did that?
Yeah, it was broken up between the two sites. So we did a test here for the staff here. And then we did it on Wednesday, which is the staff meeting day. So we did it just prior to the staff meetings for both sites.
Is that the one and only, or will there be other?
Oh, no, there'll be more, yeah. We need to take it out the kinks. And then it also helps too, because like on the administration standpoint of safety protocols, Rick just told me that he was set up with his, with the phone notification. So if you happen to be offsite, like if I was at NCS, I'm still going to get that trigger alert that something's going on in my building. And you're going to see those conversations take place. So even as an acting administrator offsite, you're still going to be able to follow your safety protocols. So, yeah. Technology integration, like Mr. Melanson said, we still have to meet on the high school end to put our tech committee together. And I just listed some of the things that, from my standpoint, my viewpoint, that those are some of the topics that we'll probably be discussing. I know they're waiting for me to give them the full inventory. And once we have an inventory, you'll get a copy of that as well. So those are just some items there that we'll be talking about at the high school and the transition from Lakeway into the high school. And I'm sure Rick, in his report, has the feedback of how the sixth grade program is going. Everything I've heard is positive. It's up and going. Kids got the machines, are going from class to class. It's a very active time in the sixth grade of Lakeway, so.
Great.
All right?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
I think you all have just a slightly amended version that I distributed right at the beginning of the meeting. I also noticed our math on the enrollment totals is off a little bit, only in terms of the entered and exit totals. I did not recalculate those. So we now have had 31 students enter school since we started in the end of August, and 14 that have exited. And it'd be interesting to actually look at those 31 and see how many of them are homeless following up on what Kelly described. And I bet a very high percentage of those are. And that's just an ongoing issue, and I probably agree with Kelly. I think it's higher than it's been in previous years. Our goals are the same, so I won't go over those. Our plans for the January 29th in-service date is to, we'll be focusing on additional NEWA training so that our staff can take better advantage of the NEWA tests and how to develop individual plans for each student based on that diagnostic. Technology, as Adam said, our sixth grade began implementing the Pilot Computer Program, actually about two days before Christmas vacation. And I met with the sixth grade team today, and they shared what's on the second page of my packet is just their overall comments. And it's really refreshing to see how excited they are. And I would actually like to invite them to come and speak to the board, because I think you would really enjoy just hearing, hearing from them and just witnessing their excitement. I won't read you through all of these, but I think partway down, a comment that came from Ms. Klisch, and she had shared this with me a couple weeks ago when I asked her to actually speak to our staff at our last staff meeting, but she said, I feel this is the biggest change in my teaching career so far. As you read through their comments from students, comments from teachers, the impact has been huge. They said it's brought a very calming effect to the classroom, things that we didn't even anticipate. But it's been very, very successful. And, yeah, I'm certainly very anxious to expand this beyond the sixth grade as fast as possible, because I think we would see the same benefits that quickly.
The student comments are really incredible.
They are. It's amazing. One of the things the teachers emphasized to me today is that teachers like to help each other. They collab, the students help each other a lot more, they collaborate. It's been very, very positive. You know, they come in, as soon as they sit down, they get their computer out. They want to start to take them home. Right now, we haven't crossed that line. But it's, the teachers were just gushing today. We meet, I meet just with them once a month, just to talk about how technology is going and what do they need. They've identified their end-of-the-year goals. We're going to integrate that into our Plan Book EDU program, which is a software program that teachers use at Lakeway to develop their lesson plans. So they'll be identifying which technology standards they're identifying between now and the end of the year. So it'll be a good way for us to keep track of actually what we've done. And of course, the big challenge right now is those are K to six standards. They're based on kids having started in kindergarten. So we have a long way to catch up. But I think also, as you can see from a lot of the teachers' comments, they've been catching up very, very quickly. So it's very exciting. So hopefully, I'll talk to the superintendent more. But again, I think that would be a very enjoyable presentation, you know, for you. And they actually said, could we bring some kids? I said, oh, that would be a very good one. We'll keep it like a half-hour Christmas. As Mrs. Melanson said yesterday, the, actually, the K-8 science teachers met when we finished developing the K-8 scoping sequence based on the Next Generation Standards. So that's progressing very nicely. And I received that document today. Also, over our Christmas break, we had a number of facilities improvements at Lakeway that I just wanted to highlight to you. We had eight cameras installed. Those cameras can actually be viewed on a mobile device, on your classroom computer. They're tied into the high school system as well, and the police department can access those at any time. So, and the clarity of those is very, very high. Also, over Christmas, we had the carpet removed and replaced with tile in Room 204, which is a small classroom on the second floor. We attached horns to our blue lights in the gym cafeteria and playground areas, because, for example, when students are in the gym or in the cafeteria, if the blue light goes off, or if there's an announcement, it's so noisy, you can't hear. So we really felt there should be a way to attract attention to them. The dilemma initially is that the horns are way too loud, and that the horns have to, right now, still remain on as long as the blue lights flash. And the police department wants the blue lights to flash for 30 minutes. And you'd be deaf in about two minutes, because these are very, very loud. So we've actually disengaged the blue, the horns right now until we can get this fixed.
Makes sense.
So that, and as Adam also described, again, the CopSync installation is in process, and we had a pretty successful test last Wednesday. Something new that I added under school and parents and community events was a recognition, the Littleton Police Department Civilian Service Award, which Jeff Howard received from the Littleton PPD. And it was based on his heroics last February, and coming to the aid of one of our families. It was certainly an exemplary action, and I thought that was worth sharing. He has received his award, but again, it's certainly very nice to see that type of recognition. Then lastly, I wanted to give you a little report on winter program. And actually, I'm going to turn that over to Crystal, because she's actually the coordinator of our program. So, Crystal?
So Rick has listed all of the activities we have there. There are 22 different activities this year, which is a little bit more than there were last year. There are actually 394 students that participate, because we do have some homeschoolers that attend the programs. Rick gave you the numbers for the skiing, and I'm just going to give you some, highlight some of the new programs that we have. Cross-country skiing is at Ski Hard Farm this year, so we have two students going there and hopefully more next year if that becomes more popular. Chess is new. We actually have 10 students in grades three through six that are playing chess. We have six students knitting on looms, and they're very excited. Some of the younger ones are very, very impressed with their own work so far. We have two students doing yoga with Lizzo Dwyer. She does that weekly with the group, but she actually had two that wanted to continue with her. Skating and, it says skating slash skating, it's actually skating and sledding. Sam Natty has a very large group of 38 students at Code Remick. Haven't been yet, but hopefully with this weather we've had, they'll be able to go next week. So they're going to divide the group and do a little bit of each. And we have ukulele this year. Friends of Lakeway purchased five ukuleles for Jay Stewart to run a program. There are three students currently with him, and as you heard from Rick, we have students enrolling every day. So we have room for a few more in there if that happens. And one of the bigger programs is the mixed program. There are 43 students in that, that occurs at Lakeway. We broke that large number into four groups, and we rotate them through. So each week, they'll do two of the activities, and the next week, they'll do a different two. So it kind of breaks it up and mixes things up a little bit for them. And I did want to just publicly thank Kathy LaVoy and the cafeteria staff. We went with bag lunches this year on Mondays, because we have to shorten lunches and shorten the day. So I talked to her, and she said that she could, she could make that happen. And as a result, lunch was very efficient. Everybody ate, everybody was out on time. We kind of had a calendar of where people were to meet all over the building so that the buses were going to different entrances. So it was a little smoother. We had a few bumps. Al had to locate a bus for us that was the wrong entrance at the high school for pickup. But that was, if that's the biggest issue we have, then I'll take it. So, so far, so good.
So we did have our first day of skiing in Canyon Mountain. So that went well despite the fact that I think the day before, a week ago, Sunday, it rained all day long, and then it got very cold, so it was very icy. But I think probably the, I asked many, many children, you know, did they have a good time? And they all said yes. And I think what we especially like about Cannon is also their facility, because there's a large room on the basement floor of the Notchview Lodge, not the Notchview, Beaverton Lodge. And it's much easier for us to contain the kids, keep track of them, supervise them, and our bus pulls right up, so there's really a lot less opportunity to get lost. Sadly, we had one broken arm, I think, on the first day, snowboarded. But went very well. And it's probably about a, it's a 20-minute ride, so it's really about a 15-minute shorter ride than what it was taking us to get to Redwood, so. So far, so good.
Very, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Community reports, so are these.
At one of our last meetings, we had talked about sort of hashing out the guidelines for the site selection committee that we were trying to put together. So I took a stab.
What site we do?
Yeah, the exploring the site. We have to, one thing we need to hash out is the name of the committee. So I took a stab at, with input from Greg of doing that, and I brought a draft tonight. Some of the discussion on here would need to be in non-public. I'll just alert you to that, because it has to do with people. Just, and there's no one specific on here, but we would discuss it. So.
Thank you.
Yep. Sure. So this is a draft for the board to consider of a possible name for the committee as well as the purpose for the committee. And I just, you know, we really kind of have to agree on this, so we can be, our expectations are clear for that committee. This thing will make the process go much more smoothly. And certainly in our policy BDF, you know, it's pretty, I sort of referred to that as I drew up these guidelines of what is required in our policy when we do form an advisory committee to the board. So I don't know if it makes sense to, how you want to, you know, discuss this, give feedback, or do you want to take it home and read it and come back, or how you want to move forward with it?
I think I'd like to take it and take a look at it before I comment and get together with Greg and maybe see what he has to say about it. And we have that planned, so if we could get back after we take a look at it, does that make sense to you, Greg, or are you good with it?
Well, I spent some time with.
Oh, that's right. You worked on, I'm sorry. I forgot about that.
Leslie did the lion's share. I spent an hour reviewing it with her. So, but I'm okay with that. We have a planned meeting Friday.
Yeah.
And we can always bring it back to Monday's work session.
Okay. That's what I was saying.
That would make sense time-wise.
Yeah. And I would just comment, you know, if you're not familiar on the board with Act 321, you're probably going to want to take a look at that. That is the law that I attached with this particular piece. The minimum standards for school sites as well as the maximum standards for school building aid for planned acquisition. So, but in general, that whole, we're going to, you know, that whole piece of, you know, of legislation, we're going to need to be very familiar with, so.
No, it's helpful. Thank you for doing this. So, the maximum is 20 acres for an elementary school?
It's 20 acres plus one acre for every 100 students projected.
That's not changed though, right? I mean, we, that's all, that's been that way, right?
No, it looked changed. Like it was more acreage that was allowed than the previous law.
Okay.
So it looked like it used to be 10. I just, I just happened upon that today, but.
Okay.
So.
Good to know. Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
This is very thorough, Leslie. Thank you. And I think it's important to know what, what they're going to be looking for in a proposal, as you say. You know, to incorporate that right from, right from the start.
Well, I think it'll make their work clear, you know. And, and people then can, if they choose, you know, they can know what they're signing on for, if they choose to exact.
It will help going down the road. This committee's site review though, right? Hopefully.
Yeah, I think that's great, I think. We bring it back Monday.
Okay.
That's good for me.
So we're going to discuss it at the next?
Well, we're going to discuss it next Monday, if you're here or.
Okay. Well, I'll give my feedback before then, if I'm not going to be here.
Yep. Great. Next item on the agenda is, says negotiations, but we don't have any, so there's none. The next item is the amendment to policy JICJA regarding the imaging devices procedure. This is going to be the first reading, and it's the last two, number nine and number 10, that Dr. Bigford wanted us to add. I think there was a law that came forth.
Yeah.
It was a bill that was passed just allowing any, any sort of publishing of photos from classrooms. I think the bill was intended for teachers not to be photographed or recorded on student cell phones. And unfortunately, I think it went too broad. So we're looking at, you know, some areas at our schools where publishing a photo of a student or broadcast as a program, there probably should be some exceptions to that. So nine refers to broadcasting class, which we do a lot of videos, and we publish those or put them on certain networks. And certainly, we would still expect permission from parents to do so. And then 10 is just regarding classrooms. So the word broadcast does not refer to the broadcast class. It really is publishing of photos. For example, there's students involved in something very positive academically or otherwise with parental permission, which we typically would have at the beginning of the year, be able to publish that event and send it to the papers, for example. Now we can't. And it's really unclear how, you know, this is New Hampshire law, if you will. You still see a lot of photos of students in the papers from Vermont or even New Hampshire or something.
Yep. I think Dr. Bigford wanted to have a second reading, which will be at the next board meeting, not Monday, but two weeks. And then we'll finally adopt it in four weeks from then, or four weeks from tonight. So you just want to look at it again. Okay? Anything else from the superintendent's report? Anything else from the superintendent's report, if you're aware of?
Just, again, in my short time with superintendent today, as you all are very aware, because you've all been extremely busy with budgeting and budget meetings and hearings, and so was he, so. And negotiations, and so, it's been, it's been very busy. And the deliberative session is soon upon us on February 1st.
Okay. And our next meeting is at 4:00, right, on the first? Is that the?
The next board meeting's at 4 o'clock on the first.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The deliberative session is at 6:00.
At 6:00.
Okay.
All right. Do you have some stuff for non-public, too?
I do have a non-public, yes.
I'd like to hear a motion to go into non-public, please.
I'll make a motion to enter into non-public session under Paragraph 2, Section 3 of the RSA 91A, colon, 3 of the right-to-know law for numbers.
Two, three?
Two, the hiring of any person as a public employee, and number three, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us the Assistant Superintendent. Is that it?
You don't need anybody else.
Nope, that's it.
You have a second?
Second.
Go call vote?
Cook.
Robbins.
We get Eston?
No.
Okay. Thank you.